Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this special work session of the Prince William County School Board to order for the purpose of receiving information and discussing the superintendent's proposed return to learning instructional and health plans. The work session of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the authority granted by the Virginia Code 2.23708.2A3, and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the presidency, sorry, during the pendency of the current state of emergency, for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Just to have some opening remarks on how this meeting will be set up. The Superintendent, Dr. Stephen Walts, will be presenting, along with staff, their return to learning plan and health plan. We will have them go through their presentation, and then we will have board members ask questions. We'll start alphabetically. I would ask the board members to, on your Zoom, you have an opportunity to raise a hand. So we'll first go in order to ask questions. And then, as we're asking them, if somebody has like a secondary question that might be pertinent to that point, they can raise their hand. And I can see you raise your hand on the Zoom, the Zoom screen there. So then I will try to call you. It's difficult to do it any other way because I can't see everybody at the same time. I would ask the school board members to try to not ask the exact same questions someone else did. I know that sometimes that's, you know, we, there's so much going on here that may end up happening, and that's okay if you have to. But for the efficiency of getting through this, that would be good. And then before Dr. Walts takes over, you know, in response to the tremendous anxiety that is out there for everybody, for our teachers, our staff, our administration, our students, and our families and parents, I want you all to know that the school board is listening. We have heard all of you. We are getting emails regularly. To the teachers, your safety and the student's safety and the safety of everyone in our buildings is our highest priority. All options that we discuss tonight will have that in mind. I can assure you that the superintendent, his administration, our school board are 100% committed to the safety of all of our students and our teachers. The second principle that I think you may see tonight as we go through this is that we are committed to a robust and improved platform for the virtual operations that this school will go through over the course of the next few months. We, as a school board, are committed to that. I know Dr. Walts and his staff have been working hard to do that. You know, I will just share sort of the idea that, you know, we're being asked, in a sense, to, after you can think of an earthquake, to try to build a building on the ground, knowing there's aftershocks coming, and maintaining that new building at the current standards, you know, of an old building. And I think it's challenging to do what we're all gonna do. I would ask that the public, the parents and the teachers, even when school's in a normal session, we count on all of you all to work together with your teachers, with the parents, to find success for our students. It's important on a regular day, when we're not in a crisis. It is absolutely even more important now. We are not, the board has been, you know, aware of what's happening on social media. We see and we've heard from the citizens last night. We really ask that everyone understand we are still in emergency. Whatever we do this fall will not be what has normally been done. And it's gonna require all of us to chip in, to understand one another, to recognize that there may be some shortcomings. But this school division is committed to recognizing those shortcomings as they pop up and address them as we move on. And I think as you hear from our administration this evening, I think those are the points that I would really like everyone to, to, to understand. But we really are counting on everyone to work together this fall. And I think if we all do that, we're gonna have a successful return to school, one way or the other. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Stephen Walts, Superintendent of Prince William County Schools. Dr. Walts?
Thank you much, Chairman Latif, members of the school board and our public. And very beautifully stated, Dr. Latif. I just echo each and everything that you stated. Tonight's presentation, next slide, please, is actually a seven-part presentation. So you can see in front of you the various people that will help give tonight's presentation. Again, this is one presentation. It has seven parts, much like a chapter or a book with seven chapters. So there are very interrelated parts to this. The return to learning options, information about our survey results, the health plan, which is required, return to work plan, and return to learning plan. Lots of interrelated parts. Therefore, it's very important to wait until we present the seven parts to start the questions that Chairman Latif mentioned and the way in which he is going to do the questions. So it's very, very possible that there's gonna be a lot of questions after I'm done and after the survey and then the health plan. But it's also very possible that many of your questions might be answered by the next person in the return to work plan. So again, it's one presentation with seven chapters. And if you would please allow us to get through those seven chapters, then, you know, take, we'll take whatever questions or discussions that you would like to have. Next slide, please. So a work session is just that. We share a lot of information, and we hope to accomplish something from the work that we've done. So it's very, very important to understand, and for the public to understand, that once a decision is made by the school board, so again, I report to the school board, it's ultimately the school board, I've heard this over and over and over in all the calls with the state superintendent and the superintendent's organizations and many other organizations, it's the school board's final determination in consultation with the division's counsel. And our case, Mr. and Ms. McGowan and Ms. Marshant. Ms. McGowan is lead counsel for the school board. So it will be the school board's final decision. What's so critically important in this work session is that you tell us when, before this thing is over and the cameras go dark, where your consensus is on which option that you believe you're going to vote on in a week. So again, I've laid out here school board consensus direction on overall model for the fall. This will not be a formal vote, but it will be, it needs to be a consensus of the school board. If we cannot get to five people wanting one of the choices, then it also needs to be understood that we're going to need to have a delay of school anyway. We're not gonna be able to start when we hope to in August. But if we can't come to a consensus tonight, it's gonna delay it even more than two weeks because our health plan has to be sent to the state Virginia Department of Education a minimum of 15 days in advance. And that plan also needs to be reviewed by Dr. Asner from our local health, from the Virginia Health Department. Our local health official also needs to weigh in on that plan. So again, the accomplished, the big picture accomplishment is an overall understanding of the options and the work that have gone into them. And then also, what is the consensus around the board's will in terms of its plan moving into this next year? Next slide, please. So I'm going to try to start off by practicing what Chairman Latif asked of the board, and that is not to repeat the same things that have been said. So I think the chairman did an eloquent job on number one. And we fully confer and we, we fully confirm and conferred with each other as a staff, as a leadership team, and with the literally hundreds of people involved in this work, that student and staff safety and health is our top priority. And when we say health, we're talking about not only staying healthy and not getting a disease, but also mentally healthy. So health means both. Number two, strive for equity and in-person instruction per health guidance. So we know that ideally, we'd like to get the kids back every single day as quickly as we can. And as a father and a parent of a student in Prince William County School who's in high school, I can tell you for sure that my daughter wants to get back in school. She wants to learn in the normal way, and she wants to be with her friends and her teachers and all the staff there at the school. Number three, and again, I'm not gonna go through this, but when you're a school superintendent and you're making a plan to move forward in a pandemic emergency, you must follow the guidance of certain organizations and certain elected officials. It is not a choice to simply say, oh, we're getting this device, this guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, but we're going to ignore that. Or the governor's office is saying you have to close down, but we're just going to ignore that. We must follow the guidance of numbers three, four, and five. And you will see that we have done so. Next slide, please. So there was a special superintendent's only conference call yesterday, and new guidance was issued. So I will just say that sometimes these things can change on a daily basis. And again, it's very complex and complicated. So the guidance that we're sharing with you tonight is under Phase Three of the Governor's Plans and the Virginia Department of Education and the CDC with an update that occurred yesterday. And so these are Phase Three and additions that occurred yesterday. In-person instruction may be offered for students. However, physical distancing measures must be implemented, both in school, if it's something outdoors like athletics, outside as well, and on school buses. Number two, remote learning exceptions and teleworking should be options for students and staff who are at higher risk, and those risks are defined by the CDC. Number three, mitigation strategies may impact operations and capacity limits. So a multifaceted instructional approach may be, may need to be planned for Phase Three. We have done that, and you will see that shortly. And schools are encouraged to aim for six feet of physical distance to the greatest extent possible. The state superintendent, Dr. Lang, likes to refer to that as the gold standard. That is what they feel and the CDC feels is the safest thing to do. With that being said, if six feet of distance is not feasible, inclusive of buildings and school buses, schools should implement a combination of face coverings and a minimum of three feet distance between everyone present. Next slide, please. So what are our challenges? So obviously, the things that are required provide significant unfunded mandates. There's shifting health guidance as people learn more and more about the pandemic and look to even other countries that have been through all of this and the new state guidance I mentioned that came out even yesterday. Certainly, we have national challenges, and sometimes those affect us even locally. Number four, we have immense financial, logistical, health, and stress challenges on teachers, families, students, and staff. And I will skip the detail I was going in because, again, I think Chairman Latif very, very eloquently explained those concerns. And we are on the exact same page as superintendent and our administrative team making these recommendations. And then, of course, we have limited time and limited human resources. So for example, if you look at the cost per pupil, you can see that in our cost per pupil, we are millions and millions of dollars a year behind the people we're often compared to, which are most often Loudoun and Fairfax County. And when I, it's not just money, it's the things that money can buy for both the students and staff. So for example, we don't have near the staff to organize what needs to be organized on a per-pupil ratio as many of the neighbors have. So that's something that's important as well. Next slide, please. So additional needs. But one thing that we're absolutely clear on, we're going to have to make sure that we can rise to the occasion if we have students in school and they're diagnosed, or not necessarily diagnosed, but we have concerns based upon things that occur at school, like symptoms and a temperature, that we can isolate those students. So Teresa Polk is our supervisor of school health services. She is on this call tonight. She is working very closely with our health department. And as I mentioned, when this whole thing started, occasionally, we are going to have some emergency staffing needs. And I want to get ahead of this curve. We're going to be hiring two additional nurses and a health aide who will be deployed as needed under the supervision of Teresa Polk, our supervisor of nursing. And just on a, on a bit of a lighter note, we have an amazing team of nurses. We have amazing employees in every part of our organization. But I did just want to take a quick second to share. I got visited by three nurses who brought me a picture of Teresa Polk there in the middle. And each and every one of our nurses are there in the background. And the delivery was made by Nurse Johnson at Colgan, Nurse Hallam at Victory, and Ms. Browell at Patty Elementary, who also made my mask. So this, you can see, is a mask, and it just so happens to be a goat mask. So I think they're encouraging me to start practicing the use of a mask because I think we're all gonna need that practice and also need to be modeling. Number two, delayed opening for students in order to provide, and I'll just say, we're gonna have to have required professional development on everything from virtual teaching to our health plan. Three, the contract date will remain the same for employees. So there will be no change to the length of the employee contract date. And our student start date, I'm proposing to be September 8, which aligns with the Loudoun Board-approved plan and is being recommended by Dr. Braybrand in Fairfax. And I will also mention at this time that we have a tremendous sharing of students and staff between and among those major school districts, as well as Manassas and Manassas Park school systems. So one of the things that we have been working on in our meetings with those superintendents is to try to match as closely as possible days that, for example, are going to be total virtual days and the days that students will be in school because of those student and staff considerations, where we may have staff that live in Fairfax or students that live in Prince William, but their parents may work in Fairfax or Loudoun. It's very important to try to coordinate that. Next slide, please. Still waiting? Okay, thank you. So where are we with COVID in Prince William County as of July 6? So you can see a total cases, 7,582, 675 people hospitalized. 147 people have died in Prince William County of confirmed COVID. And then you can see the percentages of the population, hospitalizations, and deaths per 100,000. On the last bullet, so kids and teens between the ages of 10 and 19 in Prince William County, we've had 794 cases. The group makes up 8.5% of the county's COVID cases. Among 10-19-year-olds who have tested positive for COVID-19, eight have been hospitalized, and thankfully, none have died. Next slide, please. So these are the primary models that we, with many, many teachers, administrators, and support staff have created that are based on CDC, Governor Northram, and VDOE's physical distance and learning requirements and input from our staff, teachers, and parents. Plan one, self-explanatory. This is an all-virtual model, which would involve synchronous and asynchronous lessons. Number two, Plan Two. This is a 25% model. And this is fully aligned using, as I mentioned, the gold standard of six feet of distancing. With the 25% model, the fully-aligned model, most students would attend one day a week in person. There would be online and offline learning on four other days. Specific subgroups, such as those in special education, would attend four days a week. There would still be the all-virtual option for any family that wanted to opt to have their kids do virtual only. Number five, our teachers with enrolled children, K to 5, would have the option for their child to attend four days as space permits. So we were struggling very, very hard with what are we gonna do with employees who have kids, and they have to be in the building four days a week, but yet their kids may be only in the building one day a week? How could we do this in a way that wouldn't involve additional costs? So that's another consideration in Plan Two. Number six, the fifth day is a virtual work day allowing additional cleaning and also virtual office hours for students and planning between and among teachers and staff. And seven, distancing requirements achievable with some flexibility of movement. So this would essentially provide for the six-feet gold standard of distance, both on the bus. Unfortunately, you're talking about every other seat with one child in it, and we'll have more on that later. Plan Three is the 50% model. In this plan, most students would attend two days a week in person, online and offline learning on the three other days. Specific subgroups would attend four days a week. You still have the virtual option. And we would still provide the option for teachers who, with enrolled children, kindergarten through essentially grade five, limited for child to attend four days if we have capacity. On the fifth day, again, a virtual work day. And distancing requirements would not necessarily meet the gold standard. So it would be three feet, but less than six feet. In many occasions, including on the bus, we would have students in every row. Again, more on that later. Number four is what we call the normal model. But again, that is not possible currently due to the Virginia Department of Health requirements. So we, even if we wanted to do that, at this time, we are not allowed to do so. Next slide, and happily, I'm sure, last slide. And we're anxious to move on to the next part of the presentation, which is Chapter Two. So this is the calendar, and several of these dates you're familiar with. And again, this has, the only date that's changed here is we have some additional work sessions with the board, or rather, a board meeting with a vote, and then the first day of school. So with that, we will go to Chapter Two. And that is Dr. Jennifer Casado, Director of the Office of Accountability. Dr. Casado?
Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight the results of the initial parent and family and school-based staff surveys. I listened with great interest to all the citizen comments last night about returning to school, which definitely ran the full spectrum. And I can tell you that those comments represent the spread of the responses we saw in the parent and family survey results, which you'll see shortly. I'll present first the parent and family survey results, and then move to the school-based staff survey results. Next slide, please. As you've heard from Dr. Walts and Dr. Latif, the phase reopening guidance from the governor and the Virginia Department of Education has evolved over time and continues to evolve. The ongoing work in PWCS has been informed by this guidance. When the state released their Recover, Redesign, and Restart document, PWCS took the opportunity to gather feedback and response to that guidance as it was at the time. The purpose of this first survey was to ask families about their comfort with in-person and virtual learning and to gather data to inform the plans that were already being developed and that you'll be discussing tonight. The survey was first sent out on Monday, June 22, and was kept open until the July 4 holiday weekend. Survey was sent out by communications and could be completed on a computer or a mobile device. I'm happy to tell you the survey was translated into all of our major languages, and responses were received in English, Spanish, Korean, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Arabic. Nice, next slide, please. For the analysis, we had over six, close to 17,000 complete responses with close to 2,700 partial responses on top of that, meaning people answered some questions and not all. I can tell you that responses were received from parents at all schools in PWCS. And the numbers and distribution of responses show us that we have a representative sample that allows us to generalize from the results. So that's putting my statistical nerd hat on. You can see we also had representation of families at all grade-level categories. Families were also indicate, asked to indicate special services received. I'm highlighting the proportions who had English learners or students receiving special education services here. Next slide, please. Before we got into the specifics of comfort in returning, there were some background, some other questions to ask. It was important to ask how students are accessing digital content. Majority of respondents indicated that students primarily used a family-owned device. We also asked if respondents had broadband internet access, and nearly all respondents indicated yes, which is not surprising that it's given an online survey. However, of those without, which was about 400, which was 449 respondents, about half said they use cellular data, and 27% use their own personal hotspots, with some using our hotspots in school parking lots. Next slide, please. In addition, parents were asked about the best times of their day, of the day for their students to engage with digital learning. They were, they were able to select multiple options. And you can see that the middle of the day, mid to late morning and early afternoon were selected most frequently. Next slide, please. When asked if parents could provide face coverings for their children to wear to school, nearly 85% of them said yes, with another 8% saying they weren't sure. Next slide, please. All right, so of course, it was very important to gather some information about transportation since that's a big part of the Phase Three guidance. First, we asked if families, so if you look at the chart on the left, we asked if families had used the bus in the past. And you can see that 12,684 parents said their children had ridden the bus at least, at least occasionally in the past. We then asked about plans for the fall, knowing that, knowing what people knew at the time based on Phase Three. So when we look at those people who had sent students on the bus in the past, you can see that 37% of them said yes, they would send their students on the bus, with 42% saying they weren't sure. Those percentages varied by school, from 20, 25% to 52% saying yes. And if you combine the yes and not sure, those percentages ranged from schools from 55% to 88%. So you can see there's a great deal of variability at the school level. Next slide, please. One of the most critical parts of the survey was to gauge comfort level with the various components detailed by the state in their Phase Three guidance at the time. The survey included a link to, as well as a direct image from the Phase Three guidance, and that's where these items came from. The bolded numbers that you see on the screen show you the most frequent responses. So the majority of respondents indicated being at least somewhat comfortable with most of the choices and scenarios described in Phase Three, including things like teachers and staff wearing face coverings, for example. That had the highest, that and daily health screenings were the things people were the most comfortable with. So what I want to call your attention to is the last option of the beyond Phase Three, or what I'm gonna start to call the return to normal. So schools open in the past, full-time. That had what we would call, in my nerdy language, a bimodal distribution. You can see that the biggest proportions of students, of families, were at the extremes. They were either very uncomfortable or very comfortable. So this is representative of some of the patterns and comments you heard last night. So as a result, in subsequent analysis, I examined the results based on the answers to that particular question, looking at those who are either very uncomfortable or very comfortable. You'll see a slide in a minute that does some comparison. Next slide, please. The next thing that we asked, and to better understand the ratings, it was very important to ask people their reasons for their comfort levels. The most common factor influencing ratings was child's physical health and safety, not surprisingly, followed by the quality of instruction and children's social emotional needs. However, again, these However, again, these factors varied based on the comfort level indicated on that Phase Three answer before. Those who said they were very comfortable with a beyond Phase Three opening or a return to normal were much more likely to indicate social emotional needs as their biggest factor influencing their rating. Those who were very uncomfortable with the beyond Phase Three item were much more likely to indicate child's physical health or safety or exposure of vulnerable family members as factors. It's also important to mention that in the other write-in options, many parents expressed their desire to return to full-time school. Next slide, please. In addition to asking about concerns with in-person learning, it was important to gather information about concerns with virtual learning. The most common concerns were about the social emotional needs of students, as well as equity and instruction. Also, the phrase "quality of instruction" was included in many of the other write-in responses. The pattern of responses to this question did not vary as significantly based on the responses to that beyond Phase Three/return-to-normal question in the ways that the previous question did. The plans being presented tonight, I'll address responses to many of these concerns raised by parents and families about virtual learning and in-person learning. Next slide, please. Finally, parents and families were asked about whether they would plan to send their children to school during Phase Three, again with what they knew at the time. The majority, nearly 80%, indicated that they would. However, there was substantial variation at the school level, ranging from 50% to 100%. We then asked, if you said no, you got a question that asked what you planned to do. 83% of those folks indicated that they would have their children participate in the PWCS virtual learning option, with another 11% indicating they would choose to homeschool their children instead. Again, some further analysis on this question is enlightening, and I'll show you on the next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, so, um, when you, sorry, if you look at this, this chart here, it shows you for a couple of the questions, the differences between those two groups that were your extremities, right? Return to normal, people comfortable with that, and versus people who are uncomfortable with that. So if we start, again, I cited before with the comfort factors with in-person learning, I detail for you what were the most frequent responses for those two groups. And again, for the folks, that's the middle column, that's the folks who were more return to normal, full-time instruction, the focus with social emotional needs, quality of instruction, and a desire to return to normal, compared to the folks who were uncomfortable with that, extremely uncomfortable, it was physical health and safety and exposure of vulnerable family members. When you got to the concerns with virtual learning, you can see the things, it was the same items that were the top three, just in slightly different order. So when you get to the question about sending children to school in the fall, not surprisingly, the group that was most comfortable with returning to normal, almost all of them, so 96.5% said yes, they would send their children to school in the fall, compared to the group that was uncomfortable with the beyond Phase Three return to normal plan was about 53%. And then you see similar discrepancies when you look at the answers about sending their children on the bus in the fall, particularly in the yes responses, nearly half of the people in the return-to-normal comfort level group, and only 15% in the group that was uncomfortable with that. I do want to say, before we move on to the next slide, that I had some conversations via phone and via email with some parents who responded to the survey and asked some really good questions, and hopefully these analyses show that we were trying to look at the concerns of all of the parents who expressed their opinions. Next slide, please. The next steps in collecting information from families is to gather decisions once this plan is approved. This will occur within the hub or our student information system. Mr. Guilfoyle will express the specifics of this later tonight. The purpose at that point would be to gather individual decisions to inform instruction, staffing, transportation, and more. That information will be used to help individual schools and central offices respond and develop school-specific plans. In addition, my office will analyze responses at a division level and produce a summary report for the superintendent, staff, and school board. Next slide, please. And you can move to the next, the next report, which is the staff survey report. While that's happening, I'm going to take the opportunity to thank my staff members, not only for the work on the survey, but for responding to all the data requests from the various entities compiling all the plans you'll hear tonight, as well as data requests throughout the entire closure, some that we would expect and some that we never saw, never would have anticipated before this crisis, as well as responding to state-required data requests and many student record requests. So now we will shift to the school-based staff survey report, and I'll go ahead and start as that one comes up. This survey was designed for school-based staff, and it was designed to parallel the one sent to families. It was sent to school-based staff because it was in reference to the return-to-learn guidance, particularly from the state, that focused on school buildings. All staff members will be receiving a survey form from HR that I'll talk about briefly, and Mrs. White will reference again during her part, her chapter of the presentation tonight. Next slide, please. You'll see the same background, uh, next, oh, thank you. The same, same background information that we had in terms of the development of the parent and family survey. Again, this purpose was to gather initial feedback from school-based staff. It was sent out on the same day, and a robo-call to staff members went on the 29th of June, and it was open until July 1st. I should and I meant to thank communications for their efforts and translation services for their efforts with the parent one. This was communications. Next slide, please. Close to 6,000 people completed the entire survey with another 579 answering at least some of the questions. And again, responses were received from all level, all levels, and multiple selections could be made because we know we have some staff members that work at multiple schools at multiple levels. So you can see, again, we can stay with confidence that the sample is representative and allows us to generalize. Like with the parent, the majority of the respondents were, of course, classroom teachers because they make up the bulk of those folks that are our school-based staff. Next slide, please. So you've already heard discussion about childcare and childcare concerns, and you're going to hear a lot more about that. But the survey asked staff members if they had school-aged children living in their households. About 42% of respondents indicated that that was the case. And what's interesting is that that proportion was quite consistent, except for administrators. A higher proportion of administrators indicated that they had school-based, school-aged children at home. Next slide, please. Again, like with the family survey, we asked staff members if they were able to provide their own face coverings, and you see that 79% of them said they could, and that response was, again, very consistent across all working levels and across the various groups. So those results were very consistent. Again, administrators, which was a smaller proportion of folks, but they, a higher proportion of them indicated they could provide their own face coverings. Next slide, please. So we're back to our chart that shows the comfort level. Again, one of the most critical parts was to gauge this comfort level based on what you saw from the state. So you can see, again, in the bolded numbers here, that were the most, the most frequent, that most folks were at least somewhat comfortable with most of the choices that were, most of the scenarios described in that guidance. However, when you get down to the beyond Phase Three or school opening is in the past, you see that as a dramatic shift the other way. So the highest proportion of teachers and school-based staff said they were very uncomfortable with that. But again, just like with the parents, the next level of that was at the very comfortable. So you have this bimodal or polar distribution, but not quite to the same extent as you had with families. Next slide, please. The comfort level factors for in-person, what was interesting is staff expressed in the other section that all of these areas of concern, of course they are, we asked folks to indicate their top three, just to have things tease out a little. The biggest concerns were physical health and safety concerns for both students and staff. So nearly over three-quarters of folks said that. Many folks expressed concerns in the write-in category with juggling work and home responsibilities and in the, and things like a combination of childcare, quality of instruction, and equity. There were also concerns expressed about the safety and cleaning of buildings. Next slide, please. Again, we asked about concerns with virtual learning. Again, staff expressed that all of these areas were concerns. The biggest concerns were around equity and instruction. Over two-thirds of the respondents in that, and then technology concerns. So again, keeping in mind, this is your staff responding based on experiences before. Many expressed concerns with the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students and staff. And then in the other comments, the most frequent things we saw were concerns about student participation, student accountability, and the quality of instruction. Next slide, please. We're almost there. So what, just like we asked families about sending their children to school, we asked a question about whether you would have any reason as a staff member to be unable to return to work in a school building. 22% of folks indicated that they did. That, those proportions were slightly higher at middle and high school than at elementary school, but you can see not that, not that different. Next slide, please. And then here are the reasons why, and of those staff members indicating reasons why they could not work, the majority were for medically-related reasons, either having vulnerable family members at home, so just over 50%, and same thing with their own underlying health conditions. But of course, you see another substantial proportion, they're indicating about having children at home who won't be in school every day. But you heard Dr. Walts indicate that that's been taken into consideration in the development of the return-to-learn plans. Next slide, please. So the next steps on this one is the Department of Human Resources is currently working with my office to develop a survey form that all employees would complete. This form would be sent to staff members by location and ask about their ability to return to physical work locations and their ability to continue virtual work if applicable. Employees who indicate they have medical concerns will be contacted by the Office of Benefit Services to figure out next steps, and the linked, and those who indicate that they have childcare concerns will have follow-up questions to help Human Resources tease out what those needs are moving forward. The link to this form will be provided to directors and principals to send to their staff members once the return-to-work plan is approved. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. It was an honor to get to present to you this evening, and I believe the next chapter is Ms. Heebner and the health plan. Thank you.
Ms. Heebner. Good evening, Dr. Latif, School Board members, Dr. Walts. Before I start with an overview of our Division Health Plan, I ask that you just indulge me briefly as I speak from my heart for a moment before I dive into the technical aspects. I want every student and parent and staff member in Princeville County Schools to know that I take my role as the leader of the pandemic team very, very seriously. I realize that each student and staff member is someone's child, and that you entrust us to love and care for them as if they were our own. Just as nothing is more important to me than my family, your family member is important to our entire team. The past six months have been the most professionally challenging work that we have ever done, and this is not because of the countless hours or the volumes of information or the rapidly changing nature of the guidance, but because of all of the work that we're doing to try to create a very safe and stress-free environment, it is impossible to eliminate all of the risk or the adverse impact that this virus presents to our Princeville County Schools family. So the safety and well-being of every child and every team member is extremely important to our entire team. And while the work continues to be challenging, it has been fulfilling to see how many of our educators have stepped up and really met this challenge head-on. This has also been a time when I've never felt more proud to work with this amazing team of leaders and health professionals to bring forward a health plan that can effectively minimize the risk to our staff and students as we return to learning. And it's important to me that you all know that I'm committed to working with our Princeville County Schools team to make great things happen for all of our kids. It's my personal and professional goal to create opportunities to help our students and staff see the future as one that is full of hope and promise. And the plan that I'm about to present was created with the safety and well-being of all in mind, as if it were our own children or our own family members that were returning to learn. So thank you to all of our stakeholders who have provided our team with encouragement, feedback, and input. I'm grateful to my fellow teammates, and I thank them for all of their hard work and dedication. I want my family to know that I'm grateful for their love, support, and understanding. I might have been a little bit difficult over the past few weeks and months. And finally, I want to acknowledge my amazing assistant, Stephanie Standard, who has been there for me side by side every step of the way, midnight, 6:00 AM. She's truly an amazing professional and amazing person, and someone that I consider to be a friend. With that being said, I'd like to move on to the first slide of the health plan. And if you could please do next slide. Thank you. So I want everyone to be clear that all of the practices and processes and procedures are in alignment with the guidance that's been provided to our school division from the Virginia Department of Education and Health and the CDC. It's important to note that the guidance does change rapidly. For example, an additional Phase Three guidance was issued as recently as Monday, and we will continue to look at and reform and modify our practices as additional guidance becomes available. What you'll see in the plan meets the core competencies of the guidance we've been provided and continues to honor very conservative interpretations of the requirements of the six-foot social distancing, face coverings, and mitigation strategies in order to provide the highest level of safety and to align with our current recommendations. We want to create a low-risk environment, a low-stress environment for our students and our staff. The plan has been developed with members of the Princeville County Schools pandemic team, health services team, and in consultation with our Division Council, as well as our Princeville County Health District. As outlined in the Virginia Department of Education's Recover, Redesign, and Restart Plan, the Division Health Plan prioritizes the physical and social and emotional well-being of all of our students and our staff, ensuring safety and belonging and mental health as a foundation for learning. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, this plan was not created in isolation, but in collaboration with some very distinguished medical professionals. I'd like to start out by thanking Dr. Answer from the Princeville County Health District and our Princeville County Medical Consultant, Dr. Miriam Lender, as well as Teresa Polk and Gina Bellamy, who have served as integral pieces and parts of the formation of this plan. Next slide, please. While I am the leader of the pandemic team, all of the members, our senior staff, have had a significant role in this process as we've shifted from recovery and returning to learning. And we will continue to work together to form a safe and effective environment for our students. I will continue to lead the pandemic team and manage the health considerations. We will also develop in each school building a student health response team comprised of school nurse, an administrator, and one other staff member of the principal's choosing. And this is to ensure the effective communication continues to be a part of our plan and a part of our ongoing practices. We want to ensure effective management of information and processes. Each school will be in communication and constant support with our student leadership team, or a certain health leadership team. Next slide, please. Rebecca Slater is the Director of Student Services, and will be a key member of our team, along with Ms. Polk and Ms. Bellamy. Our health student services leadership team will meet monthly with the schools, and they will also be our primary contact with the Princeville Health Department as we make decisions about our students' health and well-being. Next slide, please. We recognize that our students' needs go beyond just monitoring of illness due to coronavirus. Therefore, our plan ensures that our health services for non-COVID needs are in place. Even during COVID, we'll be providing the same level of high customer service in our school buildings. We're prepared to train our nurses and our school teams, and our practices and protocols will align with the Virginia Association of School Nurses. Our health services leadership team has sought an input of, has sought the input of school nurses and continues to plan for our return. Our school staff and health services staff will ensure that each clinic has unwell students separated from, from well students with the recommended physical distancing requirements. Protocols for our school clinics have been aligned and will be developed based on student well-being from the guidelines that are included in the Virginia Association of School Nurses. Next slide, please. Princeville County Schools recognizes the need to monitor data, and just as we have been doing so at the national level and the local level, we will use this data to guide our decisions as we determine the number of students that can receive support in person. So monitoring absenteeism is a tracking and analysis of data that will be supported by our Office of Accountability and Information Technology, and will allow us to make decisions. Students' health will be monitored, and attendance will be monitored by school nurses who will submit real-time data to our health services leadership team. Our staff will report to the Office of Benefits and Retirement Services. And I want to make a point of pointing out, when we're talking about public surveillance data, public health surveillance data, it's the ongoing and systematic collection, analysis, interpretation of health-related data that's essential to planning and implementation and evaluation of public health practice. It is not of specific individuals or personnel in nature, is solely for the purpose of making important decisions. So it's important that we understand the need to monitor and respond to the data as we track the transmission of the virus. Next slide, please. One of the keys in being successful is promoting behaviors that will reduce the spread of COVID-19. Our goal is to create an education and training plan for staff and students and families with a focus on prevention, education. This will be a part of all of our staff and student orientations. We will utilize videos and classroom lessons, and we want to create a culture of understanding where people are self-aware of symptoms and of healthy practices on a regular basis. Our education will focus not only on healthy behaviors and symptoms, but also on procedural changes for safety purposes. Protocols for sports-related activities are still awaiting further guidance from the Virginia High School League, and at this time, high school sports have been put on hold. We will be receiving additional guidance in the future on that, and we will keep you informed as we receive that. Next slide, please. We want our students and staff to become self-aware of socially responsible behaviors, the promotion of healthy hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, implementation of the use of implementation of the use of face coverings, mitigation strategies for proper PPE. We'd like to create a culture of necessary absenteeism, which means when you don't feel well, stay home. Self-monitoring and temperature checks will be a part of our daily health screening protocols in addition to self-monitoring with questionnaires for staff and students. We have to change our mindset and create an atmosphere where our students and staff feel comfortable acknowledging that they do not feel well and that they need to stay home in order for other safety. Next slide, please. In this slide, you'll see the questions that will be used. These align with the Virginia Department of Education and the VDH guidance. We're looking at a practice of each employee and each student conducting this daily health questionnaire prior to coming to work or entering our school buildings. I'll give you a moment to review that. Wanted to make a note that we are following the guidelines that are recognized by the American Association of Pediatrics, Virginia Department of Health, and CDC when we look at our fever definition or the fact that symptoms may be related or must be related to something that cannot be attributed to another health condition. We would encourage our parents of younger students that they will have to oversee this process, but also help our own students become self-aware in doing so. Next slide, please. Many of you are wondering what our position or what our recommendation on face coverings would be. It is strongly recommended that all students and staff wear face coverings and maintain six feet of physical distance while in any school, office building, school bus, or any area that does not allow the six feet of distancing. So our staff and students with medical conditions or those that have limitations that prevent the use of face coverings will not be required. But again, it is our goal that we strongly recommend that each individual maintain healthy habits by wearing a face covering. It will not be required for students who are under the age of 10. Next slide, please. I'm going to touch briefly on this as Mr. Shiroki and his team have done an excellent job, and we'll be talking about that in a later presentation. But part of our health plan component is talking about establishing different ways to create effective signage and information to be communicated to our school teams and to our students. Our school nurses have been key in developing effective communication tools and graphics that include reminders for all ages that will speak to practicing and establishing healthy hygiene, such as personal hand washing protocols, cleaning protocols, and necessary distancing. The provision of medical-grade PPE for staff will be the responsibility of Prince William County Schools. We will provide medical-grade staff for PPE as deemed necessary and appropriate. The provision of face coverings for students and staff will be provided as needed. We are encouraging our staff and our students to provide their own face coverings. Next slide, please. So a lot of these areas will also be touched on at a later time, but I wanted to show this slide because I feel it's important to show how interconnected our work is. The health plan is one piece of a very complex puzzle. We've worked very hard to align our practices and processes as a division. This has taken a great deal of time and hard work, but I'm confident that as a result, it will be good for kids, and that is really why we are all here. We love our kids, and we love other people's kids. So as part of our health plan, we've addressed components such as developing strategies to optimize physical distancing in all settings, including the modification and use of the way we use our classrooms, buses, and reorganization of food service. We've looked at protocols for school-related sports and other recreational activities, and those will follow the Virginia Phase Guidance and CDC Guidance for recreational sports. We are preparing for when someone does get sick and also the decision-making process for when to close down if necessary due to severe conditions. The Virginia Department of Health and the Prince William County Health District would be consulted prior to Prince William County making a decision. And we will be using the tracking and the dating and monitoring absenteeism to make our decisions. Next slide, please. We recognize that our health plan is very important to include more than just the physical health of our students. We're looking to support our students and our staff members emotionally, socially, and mentally as well. Our schools will receive information regularly in an online document called Supporting Our Students. We recognize that our return to school is very emotional for both our staff and our students, and we are here to support our staff and students in any way. We have plans that have been put in place to prepare our teachers and our school-based mental health professionals. Classroom resources have been provided or will be provided for our classroom teachers delineated by grade. So we're sure that they're effective in reaching our student population. Next slide, please. In an effort to support our staff and students, we have trainings that have been made available and participants. We already have had over 600 participants in our Adverse Childhood Experiences Interface Training. We've identified several other trainings that are very effective, including self-care and self-help for our employees in managing stress and anxiety. And we also want to make sure that our employees are aware their Employee Assistance Program is always available. Next slide, please. Our students in the school building will participate in a social and emotional well-being and needs assessment upon returning to learning, which will help us determine how best to support our students. We all have classroom lessons that are taught by counselors. We will provide resources for teachers, but we recognize that some of our students may need a little bit more support than others. So some of our students will receive a Tier 2 support through small group counseling to meet their social and emotional needs, as well as some students who may require more significant support with referrals to outside mental health professionals and connections with community-based organizations. Next slide, please. And that concludes the overview of the technical aspects of our return to learning plan that is our health plan. This plan will be reviewed by the Virginia Department of Education, and we will, again, adapt and modify as needed with a different phase guidance that comes out. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Ms. White. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heebner. Chapter four. Good evening, Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walz. It's nice to see all of you this evening looking so well. As Dr. Walz stated in his opening remarks, Dr. Lane, Virginia's Superintendent of Public Instruction, left the final decision about reopening squarely in the hands of the local school board. His words. Each of us speaking tonight represents hundreds of employees working thousands of hours since March 13th to give you the best and most current information to support you in making these difficult decisions. In times like this, some risk is inevitable. But the Return to Work Plan complies with current government guidance and will manage risk in a thoughtful, reasonable, practicable manner. Our plan sets the stage in accordance with CDC and Prevention, American with Disabilities Act, Department of Labor and Industry Standards, Family Medical Leave Act, PWCs School Board Policy, and the VDOE Return to School Plan so that students can get back to classrooms and most of our employees back to work as soon and as safely as possible. Next slide. Next. Thank you. The first thing we've done is I think we're one ahead. We need to go back one? Thank you. We put together a Return to Work Supervisor's Guide, which you've all received. It was drafted to ensure consistent implementation of mitigation measures and safety and training protocols for employee return to work. After the analysis of the Parent-Family Survey and School-Based Staff Survey that Jennifer shared with you, we've worked with Jennifer and Tim Neal to put together a Return to Work Assessment, which we will administer for all employees in each school and office. This will not be an anonymous survey, but it will identify participants by their position and their school. And it will identify the increased risk for serious illness, anticipated childcare challenges, need for reasonable accommodations during the pandemic, and teachers' eligibility for virtual or hybrid assignment. Information from this assessment will go to administrators at school and central offices for their planning. It will also be funneled, when necessary, to the Office of Benefits so we can assist our employees with the involved, brand-new health and benefits changes in our law. And it will also help us know, compared to our parents' wishes for their students to attend in person and virtually, how we can make that happen. We'll have to make many of these decisions on a case-by-case basis because this virus has had a unique effect on families in many different ways. We have to look at employee responsibilities and their ability to return to work virtually, subject to student need and tiered by individual and family medical need by position, by school, and by office. Next. There will be an expectation that each school and office will identify a designated COVID point of contact for responding to employee concerns related to employee responsibilities and leave. There will be an expectation of daily employee health screenings, a self-check. An employee attestation upon return to work will be completed that shows and certifies that each employee has attended mandatory training and that they affirm they exhibit no specific symptoms associated with COVID-19 or been in close contact with an individual diagnosed with COVID-19. If they have any symptoms, they will be instructed on how to deal with that immediately by not reporting to work, by leaving work, and by notifying the supervisor. We are working with IT to make sure that all employees, when they punch into Cronos in the morning or when they go into their computer, that they see a reminder that reminds them to change their status if anything that has changed since their initial health screening. As Ms. Heebner mentioned, we'll also be able to tell from this survey how we need to explore expanded childcare services for employees. And Ms. Heebner is already working with Alphabet on a proposal to assist them with that. It's critical during this time that workplace policies be communicated clearly, frequently, and via multiple methods, showing everyone what we're doing to support them and how we're trying to mitigate risk. We will have a communication plan and platform that enables us to reach parents, staff, and students quickly and effectively. Right now, the Department of Human Resources and Benefit Services has worked on and continues to work on frequently asked questions for staff. And they will all be available on the PWC website. As everyone's situation is unique, we are prepared not only to publish the frequently asked questions, but to give them a means to contact Benefits anytime they need to talk to someone in person. Next. Next. I'll give you a moment just to look at the required employee training that's been recommended by CDC and many of our other government organizations. As we learn more and guidance changes, we will continue to update and communicate. Next. This is probably the area where we get the most questions. There's additional pay and leave time available to employees affected by COVID-19, emergency paid sick leave and/or emergency family medical leave under the recent provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. More information is available even now at that website. Most of the questions we receive on a daily basis center around leave and accommodations beyond FMLA and ADA. And we'll try to be as clear as possible concerning employee rights and employee protections. We invite our employees to contact us with their questions as well. We are fully staffed in HR and Benefits, and we're working full-time. Any message you leave on our office voicemail or any administrator's office voicemail will roll over to our emails. So we will be able to contact those of you who contact us. Next. Finally, to the staff of HR and Benefits and Risk Management and Accountability, we owe you so much for the time you've taken to assist us in putting this information together. While we're still addressing our essential responsibilities of recruiting and hiring the very best and brightest of Prince William County Schools, that hasn't stopped, and we're hiring new employees every day. So please let us hear from you, and I welcome your questions about how we can support you in any way possible through this difficult time. Thank you. At this time, I believe it is Ms. Goss?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walz. Thank you for the opportunity to share key components of the Return to New Learning Instructional Plan. Let me start by saying my own team. My own team, the offices of Student Learning, Professional Learning, and L Programs and Services, along with our colleagues in schools and other offices, are truly passionate and committed to this work to teach, to serve, and support our students, our teachers, our staff, and families as we plan to reopen during this pandemic. The planning for the reopening of school is highly complex and multifaceted. It has prioritized a high-quality learning experience for all students while we follow guidance to help ensure the health and safety of students, their families, and our employees. The instructional plan, while it has had its own unique elements, it is highly dependent upon the other plans, the health and return-to-work plans that you've already heard about, support services, and technology. Tonight, I will be sharing about our planning process, which has involved multiple stakeholders thus far and will continue to expand the involvement of stakeholders. It has also involved multiple planned meetings and many spur-of-the-moment meetings with our Return to New Learning Instructional Task Force members. They have adapted daily on the changing guidance that we have received. And as I move through the presentation tonight, I will talk to you more about those members and the enormous amount of time, energy, care that they have put into the planning. And I think you too will be thankful for their service and also truly amazed that all they have done to ensure that all of our students come back to school and have a safe, successful learning experience. Tonight, you will hear about the key elements of the plan, including our robust new learning management system, a new division-wide assessment system, possible instructional models, sample schedules so our parents and students can see how a day may look. Parents, students, and staff will also hear some details about what to expect in the coming months and when we return to school. Additionally, you will hear about the collaborative efforts to develop the robust content in our learning management system and to develop and provide ongoing training that will help all stakeholders to have the knowledge and skills that will help ensure a successful reopen on any model. Next slide, please. Just to start out, we want to share about neighboring school divisions. We have been collaborating with neighboring school divisions, and we wanted to just share about Loudoun County Public Schools. That appears that the school board there has approved a 50% capacity model with students attending in person two days a week. And recently, Fairfax County appears that they are proposing a similar 50% capacity model with students attending again. with students attending again in-person two days a week. We also continue to collaborate with our sister school divisions here in Prince William County, Manassas Park City, and Manassas City School Divisions. They appear to be looking at similar all-virtual and combined-in-person distance learning options like we are looking at. Next slide, please. Building on the successes and challenges from spring 2020. So as we look back on spring of 2020, we quickly introduced our initial virtual schoolhouse for students as we went into the school closure. We began device purchase and delivery of devices to students. Our division instructional support staff developed learning activities, choice boards, lesson plans, and units to reduce the workload for teachers and support that review learning during the spring at all levels. Our student learning team redesigned our staff communities pages for every content area to support teachers. A home learning page was developed for families with multiple online and printable resources. After Canvas was adopted, we started planning for this new learning management system. We held initial focus groups of representative teachers were formed to start looking at what would be necessary to stand up this new learning management system. And we conducted weekly parent ed camps during the spring, during the month of May, for our English learner families in multiple languages other than English in order to support them during the school closure and with virtual learning. What I want to say is that we really, as we moved through the spring, we looked at not only our successes but also the challenges we had and went to school on that, to really learn from that and see what we needed to do to improve. We listened to our families and the feedback that we received from teachers and our families through email and other communication during the spring. Next slide, please. We formed a Return to New Learning Task Force. And this task force has been made up so far of approximately 90 representative leaders, teachers, and staff member participants. Twenty-one of the 90 members are teachers and counselors, instructional coaches from schools. More than 50% of the members are school-based teachers and leaders representing all levels, Title I and non-Title I schools, all areas of the county, and all subject areas. Together, those members have spent a combined total of hundreds of hours working together over the last five weeks to examine and look at reopening from a multitude of lenses. I want to just take a moment to give you an example. We've had each one of the task force teams, Canvas Team, Mastery Connect, and Logistics Team, has also had smaller work groups dedicated to each of our levels, elementary, middle, and high school. So far, the logistics team has been meeting more often than the other two, but believe me, those folks are at work and will be meeting more over the summer. But our, just for an example, so you have an understanding of the work that has gone into this and the commitment, the time commitment and the care. Our elementary subgroup alone, that work group for logistics, has met 23 times since the beginning of June to discuss all of the guidance that we've received, to look at different models, to go to their schools. They've met not only when we've planned meetings, but they've met on the side to really examine all elements of any return-to-learning plan and what the impacts would be on their teachers, on their staff, on their communities, on their students, most importantly. Like I said, we have three main work groups, Canvas, Mastery Connect, and Logistics. And they have looked at everything from learning models to transportation capabilities and facilities impacts. They have really studied the feasibility of the plans, whether it's feasible for us to implement them. The work groups have been facilitated by the three directors from the offices within the Department of Student and Professional Learning. So I want to just take an opportunity to thank those three amazing directors. Ken Basset, who supervises the Office of Student Learning, Lamara Cologne, who supervises the Office of L Programs and Services, and Kristi Taylor, who supervises the Office of Professional Learning. The amount of time these folks have put in since the school closure and their staffs have put in is really immeasurable. They have worked 24/7, and I can tell you they've been on Zoom meetings with me at midnight before. The smaller work groups of the elementary, middle, and high school, they are happening in order to make sure that the plans really meet the needs of each of those levels. Next slide. While I won't read all of the members, I thought it was really important to thank each of them. Not only for the immense amount of time they have already put in and the true dedication and caring that they have about children, families, and this work of educating children, but the time that they will put in. While we've done an extraordinary amount of work together already, there is a lot of work yet to be done. So this is just a way to really try to acknowledge all the time that these folks have given and will give over the course of the next couple of months. Next slide, please. You can see many different representations from offices and schools across the county. Next slide, please. I also want to thank our Representative Parent Focus Group. Several weeks ago, we met with representatives of the Advisory Councils here in the school division. We had several members of the Advisory Council on Instruction. We had a representation from the Advisory Council on Equity, the Special Education Advisory Council, Safe Schools Advisory Council, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, Gifted Education Advisory Council, as well as some other engaged community members. We planned to meet with them just over an hour, and I will tell you that, like the school folks that I just shared about, these parents stayed with us for just over three hours and truly had outstanding questions and also feedback from the different, their different lenses as parents, community members, college professors, having family in the military, being a part of a military family. So they really tried to give us their perspectives on what was needed for students and families to be successful in any reopening model. Next slide, please. Our Instructional Task Force members have read and studied multiple guidance documents over the course of this work. While we were not decision-makers for health plan guidance or return-to-work guidance, they recognized the need to really understand all of this guidance because it intersects. You see this picture here, I think it's a great graphic for this. There are so many pieces of information that intersect with the instructional planning. So we looked at the phased reopening. They read and studied the CDC guidance documents, the documents that have been sent out from the Virginia Department of Health. We shared around Dr. Lane's information in the FAQs that have been put out, as well as the information from the weekly superintendent's calls. We looked at Video E's information, specifically the RRR document. We examined statewide and regional task forces. Several of us have participated on the Northern Region Summit to work with other school divisions on their planning. We've looked at the Virginia High School League guidance, as well as professional associations. Many of our professional associations for different content areas have also put out best practices and guidance relative to reopening and virtual instruction. Next slide. We looked at key impact considerations for instructional planning. Again, while all of these are not within our control, it was important for the folks on the task force to really understand and examine the interconnectedness of all of these pieces, from classroom capacity based on the health guidance to the cleaning and disinfecting processes and needs that would take place in a school if it reopens in-person, to in-person instruction, to continuity of instruction for all students, to transportation capacity, to assessment and looking at learning gaps when students return, to family engagement and academic scheduling, and of course, that health and well-being guidance and support. Next slide. Overall, the principles for our instructional planning for in-person, virtual, and a combined learning models have been, again, to prioritize student and staff health. We all want our students and staff and families to be safe. And so we've really put that at the top of all of our discussions. We've looked at the impacts to staffing, the possible impacts to staffing, instruction, and learning. We've looked at equity, not necessarily what was equal, but what was equitable, especially for those vulnerable students, all of those groups identified by the state, our students with disabilities, our English learner population, our students who are struggling learners, our students who are transitioning into middle school and high school, or just starting school. We looked at what the needs of families relative to equity was. We wanted to make sure that we were planning for our school division and any plans to keep us agile, that we could quickly adapt. Something I think we've all learned since the spring is that we must be able to quickly adapt to changing circumstances and different contingencies truly overnight. And we looked and examined feasibility. These folks went to their schools, of course, keeping social distancing and utilizing face coverings and other health practices, but they made every effort to examine feasibility with respect to implementing any of the models that we looked at. And we examined the learning impacts of these multiple models and scenarios. Next slide. Video E, as most of you are aware, put out the Recover, Redesign, and Restart. And we aligned our, not only our plan, but we looked at their guidance and followed that, especially in reference to ensuring equity. We focused our meetings on students' needs first. We really considered those vulnerable student groups. And we also talked about learning loss. How would we examine that learning loss and what would we do about it when we return? We focused on access and adequate academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and other needed supports. We made a commitment to ensuring that we have division-wide support in place for our students and families, and also to ensure that all of our students and families understand what it is that our plan ultimately turns out to be, that communication to all families. And we also examined and utilized, our work groups have really utilized the Video E Return to Learning Equity Audit. Our facilitators have utilized that equity audit in a part of the work that has taken place. Next slide. These are just some examples of the guiding questions and considerations that the work, the work groups and the task force have considered around the information and research. And you saw I laid all of those documents out. They developed that list and then went to work, reading those and coming back and sharing what they have learned and what they believe the impacts on planning and for reopening would be. We looked at the lessons learned from different grade levels and based on the few months of distance learning we had in the spring. We are in education, committed to continuous improvement. That means looking at what's gone well, but also admitting when things have not gone well and what we can do about them going forward to improve and enhance. We looked at recommendations and asked them for recommendations on common course modules. One of the pieces we saw in the spring is that we needed more consistent and equitable delivery of learning. What are all the different considerations for face-to-face and distance learning? They examined those. They looked at the differences in implementation for each of the schedules and what the impacts were on elementary, middle, and high school, and even central office support. And we, another sample is just looking at recommendations for baseline assessments and how we would deliver those and when we would deliver those, knowing that the start of school is going to be emotional. And we want to make sure that we put social, emotional health, as well as mental health first and as we build relationships to reopen. If you could go to the next slide, please. The Learning Management System, Canvas, and I know folks have heard about this, so this is just a quick overview of what that Learning Management System is. It's really a unifying system for pre-K through 12. It's web-based. It truly is a first-in-class, and we've had some of our learners even this spring that started to utilize that. It will be our primary system for the delivery of virtual and distance learning content and communication regarding student needs and progress. It'll be utilized pre-K through 12 to continue to offer the current level of course offerings. We are looking at continuing to offer the full range of courses that we normally would offer. We are working to develop and utilize common course modules. Again, going back to that consistency piece, we want to make sure we offer students consistent and viable curriculum across all students, from school to school, classroom to classroom. And in that work is embedding supports for students with disabilities at English learners, gifted education, advanced learning supports, and all of those courses. Next slide. What can students and parents expect this summer and fall? They can expect live and recorded summer training for students and parents in multiple languages. They can expect additional parent ed camps in multiple languages. Our parents who took part in those ed camps in May let us know that those were extremely helpful to them. It really helped them understand what was happening and navigate the many communications and systems that were happening around learning and the school closure. They're going to see one main platform to access all course calendars, activities, assignments, and assessments. One piece that we heard from parents this spring was that navigating many different platforms and systems was very confusing and tiring for families. So this is going to help us unify that and have one place for parents and students to go. We're going, what can they, they can expect embedded supports and scaffolds and enrichment for students with disabilities, English learners, gifted learners, struggling, and advanced learners. Students can demonstrate learning in a variety of ways, so they'll be able to see that. Students will easily receive feedback, and parents will easily be able to monitor student progress. Class announcements will be on this same platform. And this platform, this system will allow students to easily collaborate with their peers and interact with their teachers. Not in a live way, but they will be able to interact through the many tools that are on the system. Next slide, please. What can teachers, leaders, and staff expect this summer? They can expect the ongoing virtual and recorded summer training for both Mastery Connect and Canvas. They can expect to have ongoing training opportunities on the use of live virtual platforms such as Zoom and Microsoft Teams. Even though we have a learning management system, we will still be utilizing these very important tools so we can have that live interaction between students and teachers. They can expect their own professional ed camps and scheduled Zoom meetings to address their ongoing needs and questions at different levels. They can expect to see advertised opportunities to positively participate and contribute to the work of the Instructional Task Force. There is much work to be done. There is much work to be done to plan out all of the specifics and very detailed processes and procedures for the fall. They can expect to see continued additional professional learning opportunities. While the professional learning on Canvas and Mastery Connect is certainly a big part of the fall, we still want our teachers to understand virtual best practices to support the full range of learners and also understand how to really manage the combined in-person and distance learning. This is a whole new way of operating. The screen kind of changed, so maybe we'll put the slide back up. I think something happened to the presentation. Is it possible to get the slide back up on the screen, please? Thank you. So they'll, they'll see those professional learning opportunities advertised. They can expect to have us, the school division is actually from the division level, creating core course modules for our courses. And again, that's to ensure that viable curriculum. It's also to help teachers so that teachers are not each kind of reinventing the wheel, doing the same work. So we will develop those course modules and we will make those available to teachers and announce when those are available over the summer so teachers can begin customizing those. The ongoing instructional updates, they will continue to get those. I started to send those out, my team and I. And we've been sending out a weekly update on instruction to help folks understand the work of the task force and also many other components. Well, we are also planning for, for fall. We are also continuing to do the work we would normally work, do. For example, registering students at our global welcome centers. Yeah, right now we have approximately 800 new English learners who are waiting to be assessed so we can offer them their services and placements for the fall. We will continue to provide ongoing lessons and materials and resources and updates to Canvas. Those will be in Canvas now. And they can expect to get instructional support to assist teachers and leaders in implementing systems to manage these changes. I think you heard it earlier from Dr. Latif and Dr. Waltz, that we are quickly really redesigning our system over a course of months of educating students. And so all of this change, we want to make sure we're providing adequate support to our teachers and our leaders in our schools and offices. Next slide, please. The ongoing work required to implement Canvas, our learning management system. This slide is really just to help folks really understand what I'm going to call the heavy lift of this work to really move all of our course curriculum into this virtual system. We have over 700 courses, preschool through 12. If you think about all of our subject areas and all of our classes, all of our specialty school programs, we have over 700 courses in this school division. Work is underway to develop those multiple modules for each course to cover all of the standards that were required to teach. When you really consider those 700-plus courses and all of those modules, we really are at more, almost 7,000, just under 7,000 modules that will need to be built over this summer and this coming school year. And we're doing that from the central office. We're utilizing our instructional support teams to do that, along with teachers in order to reduce the workload on teachers when they return to school. We recognize all of the changes and, and stress that they will be under as we reopen and we want to do all we can do to alleviate some of that work from them. So this work is underway and thus far this summer, we've already hired 161 teachers off-contract to help support this work. We certainly could not do it all on the small number of central office employees that we have in student learning in each of the content areas. In addition, you heard me say earlier that each of these course modules, we're embedding those supports and scaffolds and enrichment pieces for our students with disabilities, our English learners, our advanced learners, our gifted students. So it's really a combined instructional effort from many offices and many employees. Next slide, please. We are also, when we decided to purchase our new learning management system, we also purchased a division-wide assessment platform, Mastery Connect, and that's going to really unify an assessment system for all of our levels. It's fully integrated with that learning management system. It's going to provide our teachers with ways to develop different assessments, different types of assessments, formative, benchmark assessments, summative assessments. It will provide them item banks that really mirror the technology-enhanced items and they're all SOL-aligned. It's also going to allow our teachers importantly to really examine those formative test results and, and look at the needs of our students to examine the, the gaps in an ongoing way and really work together collaboratively in our professional learning community and collaborative learning teams. Next slide, please. What do Canvas and Mastery Connect mean for our division? They mean, they really mean a more equitable and consistent delivery of learning content across all schools and, and levels and courses. It's a more unified system for planning and delivery of this content and assessment of and for student learning. It's a single system that's going to improve and enhance our communication with parents and students. It's going to improve that teacher collaboration and sharing of best practices, something the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction has been very interested in, is ways in which we can share best practices and replicate excellence across the system. It's going to allow our school leaders to monitor and provide feedback in a virtual instruction setting. And it's going to really allow us to have a place where teachers go to develop those course calendars, activities, assessments, all in one place, that single learning management system. Next slide. The possible instruction and learning models that we've looked at for 2021 are the four that are here. The virtual schoolhouse again, in case we wouldn't reopen or we would have to close again at a later date. The combined in-person and distance learning model. It could be used in alignment with the governor's current phase guidance. It includes a 50%, a 30% to 35%, a 25% model. We looked at all of those and the feasibility of each one. A distance-only option where parents could select to have their students stay home at this time or if students are unable to due to health reasons or other reasons. And then, of course, the in-person only model, which I know we would all like to go back to and wish we could go back to. We look forward to the day that we can all be back in school 100%, 100% of the time. Next slide, please. This is just some of the guidance. Again, we continue to examine as we looked at the feasibility of each one of these models. This is very complex work. It's not just as easy as saying, oh, I like this model or I don't like this model. No, we had to see, how could we make the models work with social distancing requirements? And how could we make sure that we met all of these criteria for the CDC and for the state and for the Virginia Department of Health? Next. So again, we hope tonight that we want to make sure that folks can kind of see what, what would this look like? If we were back in a virtual schoolhouse and everyone was home again? This is a example of a elementary school schedule. One of the things that will be different if, if and when we are back in a virtual schoolhouse at any point is that our task force team has recommended some, a common schedule for elementary, a common schedule for middle, and a common schedule for high school. Again, this also is in response to feedback from, from not only our families, but also staff. So you can see here that elementary students would start in the morning for 45 minutes. They would get live instruction, virtual instruction each day in one of these subject areas. Some of groups for differentiated instruction would get live for another 30 minutes or students would be accessing recorded information, learning content in Canvas. It provides opportunities for PE, art, and music, lunch break and recess, and then additional instructional time or specialized services for students with disabilities, for English learners, for gifted students, for social, emotional learning and support. And then open hours for parents and teachers, again, a set time and a set schedule. And then, of course, ongoing teacher planning because our teachers will need, no matter what the model is, to continue to have dedicated time for planning and PD and to collaborate with their colleagues. Next slide. This is the middle school schedule. So if we're in the virtual schoolhouse, parents can clearly see the type of schedule that our students would have. In this schedule, our middle schools are recommending 20 minutes of that live instruction, that virtual live instruction for each class daily. You can see a very structured schedule where students would move through that each day so they would have those assigned class periods. They're still getting all of their classes and learning in all of those content areas. You can see four days a week and on this recommended model, on Mondays, these teachers across this level would hold open hour live support time. So they would work with individual students, small groups of vulnerable students, and also have open office hours for students who needed additional support and help. Next slide. The recommended high school model. You can see here, they're recommending 30 minutes of live instruction per class period or 120 minutes of live instruction per week per class. All of our teachers, all of the folks who are on our task force, our school leaders, our counselors, everyone realizes that our students need to have that live interaction with, with our teachers. So that is one of the pieces that they prioritized going forward for virtual schoolhouses. They've also kept in mind limits. Well, we recognize that we can't have students on, having, being on screen for hours and hours at a time. So you can see here, the high school level has said it's, it'll be about three and a half hours of screen time per day. And teachers will provide live interventions and support for our students, just like at the other levels. And you can also see time for teacher planning and in virtual office hours. Again, all of our high schools are committed to having their recommendation of one schedule for the virtual schoolhouse, a common schedule. Next slide. What could parents and students expect from an all-virtual schoolhouse if that would be the case? They would expect to have that easy-to-use learning management system, continue to have access to all of the content areas and classes. Our, our students will continue to have CTE and PE. We will continue dual enrollment and specialty programs. We'll have those consistent schedules that I just showed you, that consistent amount of live virtual instruction, which really was something that our families said our students were missing in the spring. So we want to make sure that we have that. Additional live virtual instruction and other supports for those vulnerable learners, that easily kind of one-stop shop for course material and recorded content. Students will get that differentiated support, including written assignments or alternative forms of assessment. You can expect supports for students and families who need a device or connectivity and ongoing monitoring and adjustment to ensure that that virtual experience is high-quality for all of our students. Next slide. So this starts to move us to those capacity models. Again, looking at the health guidance that we've received, we recognized very quickly that given the six-foot distancing, that we could not have 100% of our students. So again, I, I've said it several times, but it's worth repeating that this is very complex. Even the scheduling of students is complex. Try to do my best to help folks understand. This is a preschool schedule. Given the preschool sizes, this is a 50% capacity model. This ensures that our, our vulnerable group of, of preschoolers would be coming. If you see here, we would be putting our students in groups. You'll hear later, Mr. Gilfoyle will talk about houses, but those houses and groups are essentially the same. So this group of students is going to come to school every single day. And then we would take our other preschoolers and divide them in two groups. So again, we could maintain that distancing. You can see group two is going to come with group one on Tuesday and then group two won't return again until Thursday with group one. When one group is in-person in school, the other group is at home and they're, they're accessing some home, home learning support. Again, these are preschoolers, so, so this looks very different than it would for an older student. On Mondays, this shows that our teachers will have planning and professional learning. And at the preschool level, they do home visits. But if we're in a situation where that can't be in-person in people's homes, we would do virtual home visits and support students and families that way. Next slide. This really looks at really the other grade levels, kindergarten through 12th grade, what that would look like. Again, we have those vulnerable students prioritized here at the top. And you can see they're divided into, again, smaller groups. 1A, if you follow 1A all the way across, 1A students would be going to school every day. So those clearly are students who are the most vulnerable. And then we have other groups of vulnerable students that would come more often. And we have groups of our other students who are divided. Again, you see where group two comes in person and group three is at home with certain other groups, like in this case, under Tuesday, 1B is at home. And they're really accessing that distance learning content through Canvas. And you can see the same thing on Wednesday. So this is what it would look like. If your child was in group three, they would not come to school on Tuesday. They would come to school on Wednesday. They would not come to school on Thursday. They would come to school on Friday. On the days that they are not in school, they would be accessing that distance learning support through Canvas. And you can also see again, you know, on this plan, that on Monday, teacher planning and professional learning would take place and they also would be supporting students who were distance-only students. Just a few comments about the Monday teacher planning. As we've been collaborating with our surrounding school divisions, we share a lot of employees and families, meaning folks who live here in Prince William County, work in other counties and vice versa. So one of the pieces that quickly this Northern Virginia region of school divisions decided is that we'd like to all have similar teacher planning and professional learning days so that that would support our shared families and employees. Next slide, please. This is a 30% to 35% model. We looked at this. We did not find it necessarily feasible when we examined it for a number of reasons ultimately. But again, you have vulnerable student groups going more often than other groups. Unlike the 50% model where most students went to school two days a week, in this model, students would attend in-person one day a week. They would either have live distance learning support on that fourth day or they would access recorded content. And again, we have that Monday teacher planning and professional learning day with some additional distance learning support for distance-only students. with some additional distance learning support for distance-only students. Next slide. And this is the twenty to twenty-five percent model. Again, all of these are kind of under the backdrop of that health guidance, that social distancing. So this plan actually has the majority of students going one day a week and accessing distance learning the other days a week that they are not in person. But it again prioritizes vulnerable student groups to go either every day, all four days or a combination, two or three days per week based on their needs. Next slide, please. And this is a sample schedule for those parents who may opt. If that's what the school board decides to have a distance learning only model. This gives a, a schedule for those students as well. On Tuesday through Friday, while other students are attending in-person classes, those students will be accessing recorded distance learning through Canvas. They may also be on a virtual Virginia course or our own Prince William County Virtual High School courses as appropriate. It would depend on the student and and the courses that they are assigned to. And then on Monday, we still have that teacher planning, but we also have blocks, a block of time where teachers would support these students in that live distance instruction. Again, trying to give these students that interaction, that live interaction with teachers. Next slide. What could parents expect from this combined in-person distance learning model with this concurrent kind of distance-only model? That most, most students, depending on the model that this school division decides on, would go one or two days in person a week. Vulnerable students would go up to four days per week in person. Families would have the option to choose a distance-only model for their students. We would ask if families choose that to commit to first semester. Again, the scheduling is very complex for transportation and in-person considering those social distancing and other health measures. So and in order to really support a successful reopening, we would ask for folks to at least commit to that semester. Students not in school would access their learning content through, through Canvas. All students would be instructed according to their needs with appropriate supports and supplemental aids. They're, they've given the implementation of their service, L service delivery plans or I P's five oh four plans as well as other academic, social, emotional behavior support plans. Students that need additional instruction and interventions would get that either through additional live or, or recorded support to allow for instructional logistical adjustments in the first week of school. Our task force recommended that we, we hold off doing activities right away if possible in order to really allow us to make those adjustments as we reopen. Athletics at this time, you heard Mrs. Heebner say earlier that right now the Virginia High School League has kind of put a hold on, on competition athletics occurring at this time, but we will be handling those on a case-by-case basis according to that health and V H S L guidance. Activities, we are committed to and we understand the importance of activities and athletics for students. And so we certainly want to do that as soon as it's we are able to. And everyone can, can expect to have ongoing training and technical support and opportunities to provide us feedback. So we continue to monitor and adjust. Next slide. This is what teachers can expect, that most teachers, most students will be in school one or two days, that they will have four days of face-to-face learning Tuesday through Friday with students. That there will still be teacher planning and professional learning days on that Monday. And a block of time to support those distance-only learners who are accessing that recorded content along with other students on the days that they're not, since they're not in school. That they would get those developed core course modules and to provide that distance learning content to students. Again, helping them, not asking them to do that, all of that heavy lift. Teachers will be able to personalize those model, modules with their own content. We would can, the teachers would continue to instruct all students according to their needs, ensuring that they're getting those appropriate supports and accommodations and those are aligned with their service delivery plans, I P's, five oh four plans. Our teachers will, can expect to continue to co-teach and co-plan. And they can expect to continue to have ongoing professional learning, technology coaching from our I T Cs in our schools. That support as well as opportunities to give feedback on their needs and, and what they need to be successful so that we can make sure that we're supporting them in every way that we can. Next slide. This is a in-person schedule, so parents can see approximately what it would look like for an elementary school student on the days they would be coming in person. You can see here that the elementary recommendation is to have integrated science and social studies with our language arts and math. They want to focus on language arts and math when they have those students in person and integrate those other subjects into that. And when students are at home, they would be able to access that online content for each of the different subject areas separately. But this is how it would look is the recommended schedule when they were in person. And you can see here the amount of minutes and and the fact that students will still have their encore classes, their music, their art, their P E. Next slide. This is the sample in-person middle school schedule. Again, you can see either a six-period or a seven-period schedule. You can see advisory times for students. In, in the fall, we will, you'll hear more about the transportation later, but our transportation will, will mean that we make some adaptations to our schedules to ensure that students do not miss instructional time. And if they are in the group of students arriving later in the morning, they will get that time in the afternoon. So really having that continuity of learning and instruction is very important. Next slide. This is the high school recommended in-person schedule. Again, you see that, that advisory time and you see where the groups arriving based on transportation will, will make sure that they get that instruction given our different transportation miles, what will have some students arriving after others. Again, transportation, like everything happening in schools, has to really rely on that distancing that we're required to have. Next slide. What can everyone expect when students are in school in person? They can expect to ha, see a supportive, safe and health learning environment where we are providing clear communication on the health and logistics procedures to families. That's something that our, our parent focus group said, we really want that outlined so that families understand the expectations and the available support. So that's part of the work of the task force over the summer. We'll continue to develop those clear procedures so everyone understands. Students will attend all of their classes and, and be instructed in all of the course content areas. They will have their, their needs met according to, in alignment with their plans. The service delivery plans, five oh four, I P's. Students will be able to access social emotional support. You heard Mrs. Heebner talk about that earlier through our counselors and mental health professionals. Students in labs and performance-based classes, or classes with hands-on elements. When those students are in person, those classes will focus on, on making sure that those those opportunities, those assignments, those assessments, tasks are being performed while they're in person. And then while they are at home, they will focus on other, other learning activities. Students will be supported at school with reminders around the expectations for social distancing and health procedures. Next slide. What's going to happen this summer relative to ongoing feedback and input and work? You heard Dr. Casada talk about the surveys and, and many things will will really depend on the outcomes of those surveys. So that's for employees and, and families. You will see expansion of the task force membership and we'll continue to have those work group meetings and and folks will certainly have opportunity to positively contribute to that work. We'll have ongoing meetings and gather feedback from our parent focus group of those representative parents. We'll also continue to develop those core course modules for all of our courses. We're going to continue to have training sessions for all of our leaders and staff, parents and families and students. And there will be ongoing communication going out in multiple languages with instructional updates, health guidance, schedule updates and available supports for our students, our staff and our families. Next slide. I, I just want to say here, my team and I really believe in this, one team, one goal, world-class. Never in my career have I seen a, a time in which teamwork is more important than it is now. The ability to give folks the skills and knowledge they need to really work together and communicate with each other to support each other and collaborate, to, to give each other grace during this time. We're going to learn as we implement things and we're going to need to make some adjustments. And so our employees will need grace, we will need some grace and our families will need some grace. We will all need to be able to be flexible. What I have seen from the task force members, I am absolutely certain that our children will continue to be in amazing hands. Our Prince William County teachers and leaders and instructional support team, our central office staff are some of the most knowledgeable and committed employees anywhere. And I'm fully confident in what I have already seen in their commitment and dedication and care to this process, that we will be able to continue to provide students a truly high-quality world-class education in any model. At the same time that we're really looking out for the physical health, but also mental health of, of all of our students, our staff and our families. So thank you at this time. As I said before, our instructional team intersects with many areas and one of the areas that it intersects a lot with is our support services.
Mr. Al Shiroki is next, Associate Superintendent for Support Services.
So, next slide. Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. Again, it's my pleasure to present to you an overview of the planning and the efforts that our Support Services Division has put forward in, in providing an excellent start of this school year. Our Support Services Division consists of facilities, transportation and school nutrition. And we support over ninety-five schools, eleven support buildings that consist of over eleven point three million square feet. And we transport over sixty thousand students daily utilizing over nine hundred and fifty buses while operating ninety-five kitchens that serve over thirty thousand breakfasts and sixty thousand lunches daily during a regular school year. Obviously, we're going to look different this fall and we and Support Services are ready to serve and to do whatever it takes to safely transport our students, have our students enter safe facilities and provide healthy meals. Our departments didn't miss a beat once the school buildings closed back in March and we provided continued support throughout the pandemic physically and virtually. I'd like to provide you with an overview this evening of our accomplishments during the pandemic and to go over steps and protocols that have been put in place in preparing for the start of the school year. In beginning, I'd like to start with our facility services and just go over the repairs, maintenance, our building shutdown actions and our school naming boundary processes. Next slide. We continued our building repairs, our maintenance, major maintenance projects and renovations and construction. We are still slated to open our two newest middle and high schools in the fall of twenty twenty-one. We continued grounds maintenance during the pandemic, our mowing and landscaping once the grass started to grow. We continued with life safety inspections in all of our buildings, fire alarms, sprinklers, intercoms, while at the same time relocating just over sixty portable classrooms for our student capacity fluctuations this fall. Knowing our staffs and facility services were working from day one, we provided COVID safety awareness training, which provided all of our employees the knowledge to ensure that they were working according to CDC guidelines as well as providing them with the appropriate proper personal protective equipment, our P P E is what commonly call it, to each of them. We continued other critical businesses such as the end of the physical year inventory count. We had staff in conjunction with our risk management department that conducted daily and weekly maintenance checks of over a hundred facilities. We just didn't close the doors and walk away. We maintained all of our assets to ensure that they would be fully operational when the time came to return. We conducted shutdown and setback utilities in order to conserve energy during that time. We did not turn our air conditioning off. We just set it back so that it would continue to dehumidify to ensure that our indoor air quality was maintained throughout the duration and, and expectation of returning later this fall. We monitored our heating and cooling systems and we replaced filters as scheduled. Knowing our water was not being used and all of our faucets and water fountains, we continued to flush the water systems and conducted all required water sampling to ensure that the quality of water maintained its integrity. We facilitated, last but not least, the naming of two schools, excuse me, three schools, and we conducted boundary adjustments with the assistance of our school board. And there was a great collaboration knowing that we entered into the world of a virtual community and working with our I T department. Next slide. With transportation during the pandemic, we continued with all of our fleet maintenance. We developed various scheduling models and we also conducted professional development. Next slide. In continuing our maintenance, we conducted our vehicle inspections for all buses. We sanitized our entire vehicle fleet at the onset of the pandemic. We continued to exercise our buses to ensure that they remained operational. We have a fleet of over nine hundred and fifty buses. You have to ensure that the maintenance is occurring. So again, these buses will be operational. In addition, we did, just as we do at the end of the year, we inspected, cleaned and sanitized all of our special needs equipment that's used to safely transport our students on a daily basis. Many of our employees and drivers completed professional development trainings. We resumed our driver candidate training within the past two weeks with virtual classroom and behind-the-wheel occurring. We conducted weekly virtual zone meetings with our staff in order to provide them with critical information and to maintain contact with all of our employees. We began developing various scheduling models for the start of the school year, not knowing what the recommendations would be. We wanted to be ready and adapt and we worked with and collaborated with many school divisions and professional organizations to, to look at those recommendations to see what would be viable options for Prince William Schools. And I'd be remiss in not saying for our transportation department that we had numerous employees volunteer to work at our twenty-two food distribution sites where we provided daily breakfast and meals to many of our children. Next slide. With food service, we focused on meals, our shutdown actions and then extensive year of cleaning. Next slide. With seven hundred and twenty-five meals served at twenty-two sites since March sixteenth, that is truly a Herculean effort accomplished by our school nutrition department and they did not miss a beat. At the same time, we simultaneously conducted all of the critical shutdowns that have to occur where we have to clean and sanitize our kitchens based upon Virginia Department of Health standards. As well as looking at the food, being in our freezers and refrigerators that were on order for our students, we consolidated that food and utilized it as part of the food give, give outs that we provided at our twenty-two sites so that that food did not go to waste and it served all of our children as it was intended to. Next slide. As far as returning to school and looking at what our facility services department has been preparing for, I will say in the last half of the pandemic, we've been working with our custodial teams with training. We've been focusing on facility modifications and reviewing student capacity and physical spacing abilities. Here, what you see on here is an example of the disinfectant that we use, which Here, what you see on here is an example of the disinfectant that we use, which is a disinfectant that is acknowledged by the Center for Disease Control. You see an example of the partitions that will be going into our schools, as well as signage that will be everywhere within our facilities. These are only two examples of that signage that will be age appropriate, as well as the additional hand sanitizing stations that will be, I will say flooded within all of our elementary, middle and high schools. Next slide. So as our custodial teams prepared, they trained staffs to determine, again, the appropriate disinfectants to be used division wide. We determined the custodial equipment and the appropriate PPE that would be used for all scenarios that we would encounter. Our custodians have been trained with enhanced cleaning protocols. They have conducted regular cleaning and disinfecting during and after school and they will be trained on how to do that continually as we start the school year. We've placed emphasis on high-touch areas as all of us have seen as citizens of what we can do to even keep this out of our own homes. We've utilized cleaning protocols and have developed them specifically for positive COVID-19 cases and how our custodians will respond. In doing so, cleaning is not just going to be dependent upon our custodians, but it is an all-staff, all-hands-on-deck effort. And we're going to be working with all staff members within Prince William to, to educate them and to train them on how they should be able to deal during the course of any day, how to clean high-touch areas. In addition, producing a video so that the language is not a barrier so people can see what are the steps that are taken? What's the appropriate chemical PPE that can be used so that when classes interchange, knowing that custodians cannot get to every single class in between every class change? What are things that all staff can do, again, to promote good sanitizing, disinfecting processes? We've also purchased numerous pieces of equipment, including electrostatic disinfectant sprayers, manual pumps, sprayers, battery operated sprayers and foggers that can be used for daily cleaning during school, after school, and when we have any types of positive COVID-19 responses which necessitate additional disinfecting within our classrooms and any occupied spaces. Next slide. With respect to facility modifications, we have developed, again, age-appropriate signage and we worked with our School Health Services Department to ensure that the signage was appropriate to the grade level that the signs would be posted. We have our purchasing and Plexiglas partitions for use in all public high-traffic areas in all of our schools. Again, as I mentioned, we're flooding with hand sanitizer stations in all of our public areas. You will see when you enter the schools and to the classrooms that there will be hand sanitizer, disinfectant, gloves and paper towels in all rooms. We, in addition, we have purchased and installed additional paper towel dispensers for schools. Our bathrooms will be stocked with soap and paper towels. And when you go into bathrooms, you're going to see that sinks and urinals that are, they will be closed when they're not within the physical distancing requirements. So when walking into a bathroom that normally has three sinks, you may see that the center sink is, is closed for use and that the only two would be used. So a lot, one of the questions that we have been continually asked is, so what is a, what will people expect to see by our custodians on a typical day with cleaning? And, and what I'd like to share is with our custodians, we have trained them continually throughout this year or summer to clean and disinfect all high-touch items in public areas and restrooms as frequently as possible when the building is occupied with students and staff. That could be water fountains, countertops, doorknobs, door pushbars, light switches, bathrooms, visual education areas, you name it. In the evenings, when the buildings are not occupied, we are asking our custodians to conduct individual classroom nightly cleaning and disinfecting of all surfaces in classrooms where they will utilize sprayers to spray primarily to disinfect all surfaces as well as sweeping, pulling trash, et cetera. And they will be cleaning all restrooms, halls in a similar fashion. We're asking that all of our staff during the course of the day, that when possible, that they clean, disinfect all high-touch areas in classrooms as frequently as possible between classes. And again, we are producing videos that can demonstrate how to accomplish this using appropriate gloves and disinfectant. It's truly a team effort. Our custodial staff has taken the brunt of the work, but it is a team effort, knowing that surfaces are touched throughout the day and we will do everything we can to provide that safe environment. With respect to our HVAC running, we're going to have our HVAC running before, during and after school to ensure proper refreshes within our systems. We're going to be auditing and evaluating our HVA systems to ensure that they are compliant with fresh air standards. And then we'll be evaluating the ability to increase our filter ratings in our schools. So with, with respect to that, a common question that I'd like to comment on is just to say that no matter what the age is of our school buildings, all of our buildings have mechanical systems that have been designed and many of them in our older schools have been replaced over the years. And they follow ASHRAE standards and International Building Code standards, which require us to provide continual fresh air when buildings are occupied by students and staff. We're going to be monitoring and running these systems, not only during the day, but we're going to be flushing our air in our buildings before school and after school and continually refreshing that air. The refresh of air is one of the greatest mitigating factors that we can do to ensure that our building is safe, aside from everyone washing their hands frequently and cleaning all of these high-touch surfaces in classrooms, hallways and in bathrooms. We're going to be doing this monitoring by utilizing our computer-controlled building automation systems as well as frequent site visits at schools. And again, we're going to be changing out our filters on a regular basis to ensure that we're capturing any type of airborne particles, germs that the filters will allow. In addition, we are working on developing school floor plans and protocols to determine the new student capacity and physical spacing. Next slide. Here's an example where our Planning Department, in conjunction with Facilities, work to create tools for our principals to use. And that is ways in which they can see the various ways in which you can modify a classroom in order to accomplish the physical distancing requirements. And we've been working with six feet as the primary tool, knowing that is the recommendation of the CDC. What I will say is for our principals and our teachers in our schools, when you look at the basic square footage of a room, the one thing that an architectural drawing does not take into account is all of the furniture and equipment that is housed within a room. So just because you have 2,800 square foot classrooms, say in an elementary school, doesn't mean that each room can hold the same number of students. It all depends upon the, the purpose of how the room is utilized for instruction and again, the furniture, the equipment, the materials that are used to provide quality education to our students. So principals with their staff have begun and are continuing to walk through their spaces to look at these rooms, to make those determinations of how they could best maximize the physical capabilities of each classroom. And what you see here is just an example of where one of the models that's been used nationwide and even internationally is just looking at a triangulation-type pattern with tables, desks. Because again, not all of our classrooms have desks. They have variety sizes of furniture. And by going with triangulation, you're able to maximize that distancing from multiple angles. Next slide. This is an example of a floor plan that we provided to all 95 of our schools. This was a tool for them to be able to then map out as they walk room to room to determine that capacity. And what you see here is we broke it down so that schools can see which rooms have identical square footages, which rooms are certain sizes, be it small, medium or large. So when they're looking at altering spaces, they have a roadmap that they could follow so that they see that they can't reach the maximum capacity in one classroom and they have to consider other rooms to relocate that class to. This is a, a guide that allows them to complete that task fairly simply, given the task that they have at hand. Next slide. With respect to our Transportation Services Department, we focused on scheduling scenarios, developing employee and student bus protocols, as well as determining the ridership capacity. And what you see here on the right is just a basic illustration that shows the largest bus that we've used, which is the most predominant one, and that is a 77 passenger. They call it a C2 bus. 77 students, elementary students, be it, are able to be transported on these buses. And we have several of our buses where we do maximize the, the maximum capacity, given the size of our students. Obviously, a 77 passenger bus is not going to work for a middle school or a high school student just based upon the, their growth and the size that, that they are. But we have to use a 77 passenger. So what you see here is you have roughly 24 rows. And in doing so, in following the, the standards, if you put one kid to every seat, you can transport about 24 students. If you put a child in every other seat, you can only transport 12 students. So I just want you to grasp, if you have a, a bus that normally carries 75 to 77 elementary students each and every day, and we have numerous cases where we go into very large communities, apartments, townhomes where it's high density and we have multiple buses that are filled, the fact that if you have to go to one in every seat or one in every other seat, you drop that from 77 to 24 or 12 students per bus. Hence, we're having to focus on multiple bus runs in order to maintain the integrity of physical distancing in doing so. Next slide. So in developing these numerous scenarios, we've looked at all the potential bell schedules and you've seen many of them tonight from what Ms. Boss had just presented. It was fantastic working with them in partnership because as we saw the questions and where we were headed with ideas, we were able to work in sync concurrently in order to be able to try to provide the best recommendations for this evening's program. But again, we developed schedules where we know realistically, we will have very few buses with single bus schedules. Virtually all of our buses in the beginning. And again, this will be based upon very important data that we received from parent surveys about how many parents are going to choose to allow their children to ride the bus this year if we will have double and in some cases triple runs per school. And it's sheerly because of the fact of only being able to hold either 12 or 24 based upon if it's one in every seat or one in every other seat, prescriptive capacity. We designed and will be designing our bus routes around those distancing requirements. So based upon what we decide ultimately to go on our buses, we're going to have to develop our route so that we don't have more children than we can, we can handle on one given bus route. And in doing so, we have been working with many of our apartments where we have specialized transportation, be it our private placement students, our children with special needs, our McKenna Dento students and ensuring that we have schedules and protocols put into place so that we can schedule these as quickly as possible, knowing that these are very time-consuming, but also equally important as scheduling of our regular academic students. Next slide. So with Transportation Services, in addition to developing the protocols, we are developing training videos. It is our goal for our parents to be able to see, what will they, what will they see? What will their children experience when they get on a bus? Because when they get on the bus, they're going to see that all buses are going to be equipped. The drivers will have disinfectants, gloves, paper towels. We're going to be asking students to wear face coveries on bus where we cannot maintain the integrity of the distancing requirements. They're going to see that though our, all of our buses are air-conditioned, which is a phenomenal item that we have here in Prince William. Not many school divisions can say that they have that for all of their buses. But in order to increase the circulation, we are going to be recommending that the windows in the front and the rear of the bus be open for air circulation. Again, air circulation is key to healthy air quality. And again, this is going to have to be as weather permits. We have days that are very, very hot or when there is storms, we're obviously going to have to make adjustments. Students, the videos are going to show where students will board and exit the buses while individually, while maintaining the six feet distancing requirements to the best of everyone's ability. They're going to see how staff will be utilizing the cleaning protocols where we're asking our drivers to do their best to clean all high-touch areas in between their bus routes. And then at the end of the day, they will fully clean the entire bus with the sprayers that we are providing, as well as our transportation zones in the evening will be providing additional support to ensure that our buses are clean. Based upon the CDC guidelines, again, we've talked about the maximum ridership on our buses. Where we are today is that we're recommending two models for our elementary students, which are smaller children, and when I say smaller, meaning by generally height, we are going to be recommending that we put one seat per bus, or one seat per student on, for our buses, which means that for the elementary, we're going to be able to transport 24 students on a 77 passenger bus. And with mitigating strategies, we're going to utilize the high-back seats that are generally higher than most of our students, as well as the use of face coverings as a mitigating strategy. Again, elementary is our critical path when it comes to physical distancing, given we have the greatest number of students that are scheduled. So this is why we're making this recommendation. However, you will see for the middle and the high school, we're going to be scheduling our routes to where, given their height, the high-back seats cannot be a mitigating strategy because they are taller than the backs of the seats. And we're going to have to get, start with 12 students per bus and continue to use face coverings as a, an mitigating strategy for them. And again, this will all be based upon what decisions we make, based upon ultimately what capacity model is decided. It is our goal to shoot, to maintain the physical capacity requirements as much as possible. But I'm not going to deny it today, we are going to have cases where we are not going to be able to maintain this, that we're going to design it to the best of our ability to keep the integrity there. There will be cases and we're going to have to work to balance bus loads and to ensure that we can maintain that as much as possible. Next slide. For school food and nutrition services. So this is the area within Support Services that we have received an abundance of prescriptive guidance from a various departments that manage our food programs. Specifically, the Virginia Department of Education, the Virginia Department of Health and the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA, who funds many of the programs that we have within our, our School Nutrition Division. So we're going to focus now just to talk a little bit about the modified processes and how we're going to deploy food. And that's going to vary based upon the elementary and the middle level. And then the ideas and the plans that we have for allowing there to be continued meal distribution for the days, if it's dislocated, that children will not physically be in school. How can we try to provide students who qualify for free and reduced meals, those additional meals so that they do not go hungry? Next slide. So the USDA, the Department of Education, the CDC, the VDH, with all of their guidance, we have developed menu models for this fall that will address all those nutritional requirements. The menus are going to be on a modified, but fixed menu, meaning we're going to have two hot entrees with one vegetarian option and two cold entrees. And these, these meals are going to rotate based upon the schedule that is picked so that they can be efficient. The USDA and the Department of Education, they are encouraging the use of cafeteria lines, except when they're not practical in schools. Now, when I say this, I'm referring to the fact that kids will go through a line and receive their meal, but I'm not referring to eating in a cafeteria. Per the CDC guidelines, the components of the meal must be served to the students. Now, this is a little different than what we've normally done in school years. We are not going to be able to continue with any form of buffet-style service. Food sharing will also be discouraged, as well as even sharing tables that we've had in our schools. We've made so much progress and again, trying to find ways to provide additional food for kids that are hungry. But these are ways in which you have items that are being touched by multiple people and we need to control that based upon all guidelines. US Department of Education is, is telling us not to utilize pin pads when students enter their unique identification and that's in order to reduce the common touch points. So we're going to be using rosters and/or ID cards with our students, knowing that we're not going to be able to use the actual pin pad that's been used in years past. Our kitchen staffs have developed protocols, again, that are in accordance with all the state, federal and CDC guidelines when it comes to the USDA, Department of Health and C, in the Center for Disease Control. All of our cafeteria sites will be supervised by a ServeSafe certified food manager. And I am very proud to say that we have over 300 staff that have received this ServeSafe designation. Per the VDH Food Employee Reporting Agreement, all of our staff are required, and this was even before COVID-19, to conduct a personal health screening prior to coming to work each day. All of our staff will be provided and will use appropriate PPE in their kitchens as recommended by the CDC. You're going to see when you go into the cafeteria, into the lines, that we're going to have to, again, maintain the six-foot distancing requirements when receiving meals. Partitions will be utilized when distancing is not possible. And just as you're going to see in our schools, you're going to see it in our cafeteria, numerous examples on our floors where taper cones are used just to remind people of what six feet social distancing is. You know, many of our schools have 12-inch tiles on the floors and you can just count six and you know that's six feet. But we do have schools that have concrete floors, be it stained floors, terrazzo floors, and you do need these visual reminders, but we need this as a cue, just as we need to flood our schools with signage reminding them to maintain distancing, to clean hands continually. Next slide. Our food deployment, and this is where it's going to vary between the elementary and middle and high schools. In the elementary schools, we do not see bringing kids to a food line as a practical measure, given the age of the children and the challenges. We want to minimize the class interactions as much as possible. And in doing so, we're going to be working with our schools to ensure that students can place orders in the classrooms that morning. They might have utilizing standing orders where we already know what they're going to get, but we're going to ensure that those orders are made so that the meals will then be delivered to the classrooms utilizing touchless service for each room. Our school nutrition staff is going to be working with our building administration to ensure that the plans are tailored for their unique school layouts and situations. We have guidelines that we have to follow, but we want to make sure that we give every school administrator the autonomy to be able to design a plan that works best for their instructional programming. And we want to do that. And I'll just wait for the slide to come back, knowing that it just left. Thank you. At the middle and the high school level, our students will continue to order in the line as they've done in years past, but they're going to have a modified menu for speed, and our staff will prepare for provisions utilizing the data and leveraging technology for the production. You know, we're going to, again, have to get the orders done in advance, but when kids come, they're going to be able to choose one of those menu options that I just mentioned. It's our intent based upon the USDA's guidelines, students are going to need to walk back, walk to the cafeteria, maintaining that distance. They're going to get a serve-and-go meal versus a grab-and-go meal. Grab-and-go is where we have breakfast, we have bags of breakfast and snacks, and we provide that to the kids. Here's an example where they're going to have disposable trays, plates, and they're going to have a serve-and-go meal, and they're going to ultimately take it back to the classroom. Now, I will tell you, dependent upon the principals and how they use their non-instructional space, such as a cafeteria, there's no way that you could hold large quantity or volumes of students within a cafeteria, given physical distancing requirements. But you will have the ability to have some classes in there if a principal chooses, and they're not using their cafeteria for another reason. So they could rotate kids through if teachers need breaks, they have the ability to have that flexibility. But again, we're going to allow schools to decide that of where they believe. You know, we've had many educators or principals tell us that if weather permitting, they're going to allow kids to eat outside. It's not just always going to be within their classroom or limited basis in a cafeteria. They're going to look at all ways, again, to try to create that ability to have a social environment while maintaining physical distancing. And again, we're going to work with our high school administrators and middle school administrators to try to, again, customize those layouts. In addition, we are looking at ways to develop methods to provide the meals when the kids are not physically attending school. And again, it depends upon how many times a child does not go to school. We know that we have to do our best not to single them out to where students can see who is eligible or not eligible. But we also know that dependent upon the model that's selected, if we were able to provide meals for the off days, it's a lot of food. And we know that if we provide, if kids go to school two days a week and they have three days remaining, carrying three days worth of breakfast and lunches is going to be very challenging for them, as well as maintaining appropriate temperatures. So we're looking at working with the USDA, who has not given us guidance at this point, but they will be shortly, to be able to look at, will we be providing pickup meals where parents can come to each school, as an example, between the hours of, say, five to seven PM? And then they can pick up meals for their children, be it for a block of days or just an individual meal per day. We will have further information that we will be providing to you on how we're going to accomplish this once we receive that guidance from the USDA. Next slide. So at this point, that concludes my piece on behalf of Support Services. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matt Gilfoyle, our Associate Superintendent for Communications and Technology, to discuss the hub and the scheduling considerations. Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. First, the good news, which is I am the cleanup batter this evening. I am your final presenter, and I only have two slides. So let me just walk you through first and foremost, I want to say thank you, a huge thank you to the amazing IT, technology and communications staff that we have here in Prince William County. We have some remarkably dedicated employees who have been working nonstop, really, since March thirteenth. They have been working around the clock to keep things moving forward, and not just moving forward, but actually to be innovating as we are trying to move forward. So I wanted to thank our communication staff, who they have been sending out weekly reminders in the SCOOP and in other stories and in other platforms, sending out daily updates to keep everyone connected and understanding what's happening here in Prince William County. They're sending out both the good news and trying to keep everyone apprised as to where we're headed this fall. And also, as other folks have mentioned, I want to thank our partners in Language Services, who have been working very closely with the Communications Office and have helped translate many of our communications into eight languages and being able to provide those to our families since March thirteenth. And then, of course, our remarkable IT staff, who have kept all of our systems running and operational throughout this global pandemic, and also not just keeping them running, but really, again, continuing to innovate during that period. You know, we have kept our key systems like payroll and our email and our firewalls all running well. We're continuing to upgrade our network and increase capacity and increase the number of devices that we're supporting on our networks. Our staff have been working really hard to install Wi-Fi parking lots. We have them now up and running, and we will by the start of school on every middle and high school. So we have folks that are up there on roofs, in this weather, as you know, it's hot. They're up there working hard because they're truly dedicated, and they are working as fast as they can to be able to support our families. They have been also working, as you know, since March thirteenth, we've been providing thousands of devices to students across Prince William County. I also want to especially thank our school-based instructional technology coaches, also known as the ITCs. They have been demonstrating just an amazing can-do attitude. They've shown just their own self-initiative to create their own professional learning communities, to really help our teachers, who essentially have to relearn how to do the job in many cases. We're all in this together, trying to reinvent schooling within a month. And it's an incredible challenge, and it takes an incredible amount of teamwork. And so I just want to really thank our ITCs, who are critical to supporting all that work that Ms. Goss talked about with regard to Canvas especially, but also how do you use Canvas? How do you use Zoom? How do you integrate all these pieces together? How do you create a curriculum and tie those things so that we can support our students in a new way this fall? And so I really want to just say thank you to our ITCs and of course also our central office staff, who work closely with our ITCs to do those things. As I mentioned, you know, we have to essentially create a whole new school division, really, in four weeks. Every summer, we have incredible complexity with the scheduling that we have to do. And it takes up to a month for all of our schools, working with our central office hub team, to be able to do that. So of course, this year, we layer on the complexity of whatever model the school board chooses to move forward with, and it creates an incredible challenge for everyone involved. And so, you know, the good news is that last summer, we were able to successfully upgrade our student information system, what we'd like to call the hub. We did upgraded with a company called Synergy, and it runs on the AWS cloud. It's very reliable, it's very scalable, it's very flexible. And so it's giving us a lot of capacity that we hadn't had previously to, that we will be able to effectively support whatever model is chosen and be able to accommodate that. Ultimately, this is going to come down to really just a giant math word problem. Of course, lucky for me, I had Ms. Carol Knight as my algebra teacher at Woodbridge Middle. So I know that we're up to the task. I know that the team has been working hard to already work closely the hub central office staff with our counseling teams and our administrators, our school-based administrators. They've been running simulations and scenarios to test this, to see if it is even possible and what are going to be the challenges with different models. And so we feel very ready that we are going to be able to accommodate those things. But of course, that will take time. You know, every student essentially is going to have to be slotted into a house, if you will. So those of you who might be a Harry Potter fan, you're familiar with houses. Essentially, we would take students and we would be, depending on the model, they would be placed into a different house for scheduling purposes. So just to kind of keep it simple, in a fifty percent model, for example, where students would go two days a week and the other days virtual, and then you may have students that attend school every day, depending on their needs. Some students might be grouped into the A house, and then another group of students would be grouped into the B house. And then we might have a C house for those students that attend every day. Now, it's important to note that a teacher is going to teach the same course across all those houses. So the teachers aren't going to have to redo their lesson plans for every single one of those different groups. They will have those lesson plans be able to be loaded into Canvas and then cross-linked across all those different groups. So essentially, the teacher does that work once, and then is able to share with these different groups. And then the attendance piece, teachers would take attendance through the hub, just as they did this past year as well. Through a process of both automated scripting, but then also a heavy amount of manual work where our counseling directors and administrators in our schools would have to work collaboratively, we would schedule every student. Once that complex work is done, the Transportation Department starts their jigsaw puzzle, and they're going to have to take that data and try to finalize all those bus routes that Mr. Shiroki just talked about. And then again, we will also have to sync all that data back into the Canvas Learning Management System and load those classes so teachers have their class rosters. I think it's just important to keep in mind that we are prepared to support whatever direction the school board would like to take. However, choices equals more complexity. Anything is possible with time and money, and of course, we don't have a lot of either one of those right now. So once the model is chosen, it's going to be critical that we define what those choices are that we're providing to parents and guardians very quickly. We're going to need to make those choices available to parents, probably through ParentView. Parents would go into ParentView, make those selections that will be tied directly to the student record. So that way, immediately, we can begin scheduling and start running reports to make determinations like who is choosing an all-virtual model, if that was an option, for example. It's also important to understand that, for example, if we chose to try to align siblings within a school, that is complex. And then, of course, trying to align siblings across schools would be nearly impossible, but is very complex if that's something that we chose to do. So, you know, as we move forward, I just want you to understand that the team is ready, willing, and able, and they stand ready to make the hub work for whatever model that we can. Jason, if you can advance to the next slide, please. So as you recall, back in January, I presented a four-year digital equity plan prior to COVID that was going to focus on trying to catch us up from a technology standpoint in here in Prince William County. And with the board's blessing as part of the budget process, we are now moving forward to implement that plan with as much speed as we possibly can. And so, as you know, we have been working very hard to make sure that every high school student, first and foremost, is going to be able to be provided a device this fall. And that is something that we are going to be prepared to do. And our schools have been working incredibly hard to make the logistics of this work. A lot of this falls ultimately to the schools to figure this out, but we've been working very collaboratively to help them and provide guidance and support wherever we can. And then by November, we have ordered enough laptops that we will have one for every high school student in Prince William County to be able to have a consistent device across all of our high schoolers. Working with middle schools and elementary schools, they will be prioritizing support for those students who've indicated through surveys that they have none, and then supporting other students as we're able to do so. We know that home internet access is a challenge for some, and so that's, as I mentioned, we've been working hard to develop these Wi-Fi parking lots so that a student or family can work from their car socially distanced, or sit on a bench away from others, and be able to access our network and their resources. I think it's important to note, too, though, that Canvas and some of these other tools, a student would be able to, while they were in school, for example, they could potentially download the lesson. For example, if the assignment was an essay, they could then download it, work offline on their laptop, for example, and bring it back to school and then upload it when they were back on the network. So not necessarily all lessons require constant internet access either. However, we also do have Comcast cares, which is an available to, as a low-cost option of internet for those families that qualify, and we'll do what we can to promote that, to make sure that families are aware. And we continue to explore other means, as much as we're financially able to support those for families at home that don't have internet. And then the last point I want to make simply is that bandwidth at schools, every school will be at ten G. This is a limitation that would impact the ability to do live learning from every teacher sitting in a classroom in one of our schools all at the same time. There simply wouldn't be enough bandwidth. So if the choice was made that a teacher would need to teach live from within a classroom, we would need to be able to stagger that, again, through a scheduling process. So again, we don't overwhelm our network and crash it. That's the last thing we want to do. So we have been running the math very closely and looking at those things to figure out what we can support and how much live learning out of the system could we do. We feel confident that we can support the current models, and we've been working, again, very closely with Ms. Goss and the other teams to make these determinations. So just in conclusion, I just want to note that this is a tremendous task. As everyone has said, this has just been a huge team effort across the board for months, and we stand ready to support whatever the school board's decision is and to support every student to the best of our abilities. So I would now like to turn it back to Dr. Walz.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle, and thank you to the entire staff and everyone who has contributed. Jason, if you could please go back to my presentation and pull up slide number nine, and I'll wrap up very quickly. Slide number nine of my presentation essentially shows you the four different plan options. So before turning it back over to the chair and to the school board, what we're asking is that at the next meeting, there will be a resolution. And on that resolution, the board would be voting on which plan you prefer, as well as the return to work and the health plan. Those all have to be voted on. And also, the start date for students of September eighth. So there would be a resolution for all of that. So hopefully, as the work continues tonight, we can get to a point where there's a consensus around a plan. Finally, I would just like to say that the decision of the board on which plan they prefer will also, or can also, may also drive some changes to certain things on the health plan. For example, Mr. Shiroki, and as I mentioned during my presentation, we tried to align everything with the gold standard at the six feet. But if we end up going to a capacity of fifty percent, we may do something different in the restrooms, other than the six feet mandatory if kids are wearing masks in there. So again, some of these things may drive a few changes in those, but any changes that we would make, we would send out in advance that would only be a result of the plan that you choose. But we would send those out in a way that you could easily see it before the actual vote. And so again, I want to thank everyone for their cooperation, their help, their patience, their teamwork. And with that, I turn it back over to Chairman Latif and the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Thank you to all of you for this presentation. It is going on almost three hours of this. So I will ask the board to take a fifteen-minute break in all of you all before we start questions. It's been a solid three hours we've been sitting here, and so a fifteen-minute break, and we can reconvene at eight oh five. I think, Dr. Walz, as we go through the questions, I think it's important to, you know, hopefully, we can come to some level of consensus, as you pointed out earlier, on a plan tonight so that we can even, you know, not that we vote on it tonight, but at least you all have an idea, because one extra week of working towards that plan is going to be critical for you all. And so I think some of the questions will drive those decisions. And but let's go ahead and reconvene at eight oh five and to start back up on questions.
Thank you.